And welcome to. Again, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees. For Thursday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, it's seven P M. So we're gonna get started here in the Ray Bradbury Conference Room. On the second floor of the library. Let's start with a call to order. Sean, can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Dean Sarwin.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Here.
Ken Gross.
Here.
Edward Pearson.
Here.
Thank you. Annie is gonna be fifteen minutes late.
That's what I understand. Yes, thank you very much. So, uh, in an effort to better manage the business on the agenda, a general public comment will be limited to thirty minutes. At the beginning of the agenda, if there are speakers remaining in the queue, they'll be heard at the end of the meeting. Okay. If you'd like to make a general public comment for items not listed on the agenda and are now under the purview. Uh, excuse me, or under the purview of the Library Board of Trustees, please now raise your hand on Zoom or turn on the speaker card. Uh, Sean, do we have any speakers?
We do not.
Okay. Uh, so we don't need to count the speakers. There being no one else, then now declare the public comment period closed. Uh, we have a presentation on the California Library Service Act and Cooperative Library Systems. Uh, there's a presentation that the chair, I don't know, I don't have a presentation to enter the give. Uh, we'll please you introduce Support Services Manager Barbara Posner to discuss the SCLC presentation. Barbara.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sean, do you want to hit the got it on the Zoom?
Is it? I'm sorry, where is that?
I think Barbara's.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
Got it.
Got it.
So you know what they were doing.
Thank you, Sean.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so the Southern California Library Cooperative, um, was a fairly important part of public library structure in Southern California. Um, back when I started here, it was called MCLS Metropolitan Cooperative Library System. So anybody who's been around a long time may remember that term. This is the same organization, uh, but over the years they have changed, uh, the name and kind of expanded what it is that they do. So there is a, um, whole little presentation that y'all can follow along with. Um, but basically back in nineteen sixty-three, and Sean, if you'd like to switch to, um, the slide after this one. Uh, there was a, uh, education state education code that provided the genesis uh, for the California Library Services Act, basically. And all public libraries in California are eligible for membership in a cooperative. There are a lot of cooperatives, as you will see, um, coming up. But these cooperatives, the, the basic intent for them was to distribute state funds uh, to make service, library services to the public more equitable. Uh, some communities are more wealthy, some are in more need. And this is a way for the state to distribute money so that everybody is potentially able to serve the public in the same way regardless of, of what they start with. So, um, Sean, if you can switch to the next, thank you. So these are the, um, cooperatives throughout the state that are funded by this original grant. Um, or it's not the term for it, but I'm not politically a student, so that's what we're gonna go with. Um, so we are way down here in the bottom, the purple, um, Southern California Library Cooperative. And Sean, if you can switch to the next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so it is, um, under the Joint Powers Authority and subject to the Brown Act. Um, there are forty different library districts or individual libraries that are located in Los Angeles Ventura Counties. It used to include, um, Orange County. Feel like I'm missing somebody there, but, um, but over time, libraries have come in and gone out of the cooperative. And um, Sean, go ahead and switch to the next slide. There we go. So back in nineteen sixty-six, we were one of the first libraries that did join SCLC. And in nineteen eighty, Los Angeles joined, which is great because they've got a lot of resources and we can really use them. Um, it's, it's just a wonder that they've stayed with it because we're small and we don't provide as much back to them, but, um, it, it ends up working out well for everyone in the long run. So this is sort of a timeline of what happened. And in twenty thirteen, Orange County withdrew to form a whole new cooperative system on their own, which probably is good because once you get too many people at the party, it's hard to serve everyone. So, um, Sean, if you could move to the next slide. Thanks. Uh, so the primary responsibilities are to provide for the needs of the member libraries and the public they serve, which is why we're all here. Oversee CLSA fund requirements, which are received annually. Ensure all state reports are filed accurately and on time and facilitate quarterly meetings subject to the Brown. So Sean, if you can move to the next, thank you. So the benefits that we get are these categories here and a couple of them, um, I, I know more about than others. So thank goodness Kathy is the one that has to worry about things like CLSA funds or, um, that sort of thing. But the advocacy support, for instance, we have a, um, online resource called Press Reader for the public to use for reading magazines and use. Well, Daily Times dropped out of Press Reader, which was the only reason that we really wanted.
Oh, my God.
And the advocacy support is that all of these libraries together as part of the cooperative were able to to have the cooperative itself, SCLC, um, advocate on behalf of the libraries needing this resource. And so we were able to reinstate that, uh, because of that combined advocacy. And the same with things like grants, you know, we're, we're better eligible for grant opportunities because of SCLC. Um, Sean, can you move to the next slide? Thanks. So this CLSA funding, um, the California State Library distributes the funds to each cooperative using a population-based formula. And so some of the districts are quite large because they have very few member libraries in them, but it sort of balances out. And as it says, the funding is split into two categories. So eighty percent of the funds are for communication and delivery, and twenty percent of the funds go to system administration, which means running the whole thing. And we'll talk a little more about that split in the next couple of slides. So Sean, if you can switch, thank you. Um, this is just a a quick breakdown of the budgets of the different cooperatives in the state. Um, and what the monies go to. Sean, the next slide, please. Thanks. So again, the delivery between member libraries. Um, here in Southern California, with SCLC, there's a lot of libraries and people don't always know which library they borrowed the materials from, and so they'll return them to the wrong library because they have so many library cards. There is an actual delivery van that runs because of SCLC, and this, this has happened as long as I've worked here and is probably the most visible piece and most understandable piece to the average person. They've returned the book to the wrong library. So within a couple of weeks, that book is back at the right library because the delivery man is taking it to us or from us to the library it belongs to. So it's sort of old school, but it is super important and, and we highly value that. It's certainly more tangible than many of the other pieces that I'm talking about here. And then again, the shared resources, we would not be able to afford to purchase some of these with just our own budget, but because we're part of cooperative and they're buying things on behalf of the entire cooperative. We are able or subscribing to, we are able to then get Press Reader and I, the other subscription that we have through them right now is the Gale Archive of Ginger and Sexuality, but those will change during, you know, sometimes there are more things available and sometimes less. Um, Sean, if you can move to, thank you. So the advocacy support, um, as I touched on earlier, um, they also advocate for changes in CLSA regulatory language and expand the definition of CLSA acceptable use of funds for resource sharing. They identify and support regional priorities related to CLSA and non-CLSA work. And the Executive Director, um, of SCLC serves on CLA Legislative Committee. So I'm glad I don't. And then, uh, Sean moving on. Thank you. So the grant oversight and management is huge. Um, most libraries are not able to employ a person that just handles grants all the time. And so the state library actually hires SCLC or the cooperatives to administer grants in their areas. Um, and they also uh, many of the grants that they've done are listed there. Just recently, uh, we actually applied for this backpack program that's listed at the bottom. So we'll see if we're able to get that, but all libraries throughout the state are able to apply for this. And it's part of the Parks Pass program. So if you're familiar with our Parks Passes that you can check out. If we get, um, the backpack grant, then we will get two backpacks that have day hiking materials in them, like poles, things like that, and we'll be able to circulate those with the Parks Pass. Everybody in the state wants one of these, so we're just hoping that we get lucky, but that whole grant is being administered by SCLC. So it's our local cooperative that's, that's administering it, but it is open to everybody in the state, and that's how many of these are. That means they get money for administering the grant, and so that's a revenue to, um, the cooperative. Um, Sean. Thank you. So this slide, um, also talks about shared best practices, which is also super useful to a place that's our size because we're a very small staff. Um, we like to think we know what we're doing, but once in a while it doesn't hurt to find out. I mean, I'm sure Burger King sends somebody to McDonald's to see how they make the burgers. We don't have to go into cover, is the good part. Um, so there are lots of committees, there are lots of meetings, um. But there are also times when, uh, like when COVID hit and we were trying to figure out how do we serve people if we're not supposed to be interacting with people face to face? And all of the library takeout service that we did, all of the things that we did online, those were all collaborative efforts with other libraries. One library would have an idea, another library would say, oh, this is a way to do that, but let's do it this other way, because that works better for us. And so in a situation like that, it was, it was life-giving for us. I, you know, we would not have been able to figure out how to do all of this on our own. So having the cooperative um, was really, really essential. Um, more recently, later, I think we're gonna talk about this a little bit, the library app that we have, our software company, um, and the developer of the app have had a dispute. And so our app is no longer working. And yeah, we were able to find out from other libraries who use that same app in the SCLC Cooperative, um, how they were handling that, what kind of messaging they were giving to their customers that seemed to work better. And again, when you've got a small staff like ours, you wanna make sure that you're giving the best information as quickly as possible. And so to have a larger brain trust behind you is really essential. Um, Sean, can we? Okay. So the Khalifa, um, is a nonprofit library members consortium that we belong to as part of uh, SCLC. One thing that I know that they do, um, if you are trying to buy or subscribe to some brand, membership in Khalifa will give you a discount for that item because you've got the power of the other libraries who also meant to do this. So Khalifa is related to SCLC, not exactly a part of it, but it's because we belong to SCLC that we also belong to Khalifa. Sean. Thanks. So the SCLC revenue sources are listed there. Um, a fair amount of that comes from the state grant money. And some of it comes from the activities that SCLC does, uh, with that money, partly some of the, I guess we don't have the breakdown in here, but some of the library, uh, systems throughout the state that are like SCLC don't run their own cooperative, but they hire one of the other cooperatives, cooperatives to run it for them. And SCLC runs, I believe, four of the other SCLC-type cooperatives. So they get money for that, but then they're able to spend again on partly their own overhead and partly on the general resources and all the other libraries. And Sean. Thank you. So that's pretty much the end of it. There are five people who work at SCLC. They do the work of a hundred. And, uh, without them, I, I really can't imagine what it would be like because they've just always been there. I've been here a long time and they were here well before these, so.
I have a question. Going back to the app, so then will this organization then kind of help advocate, wa- was there money involved with the app? Are, are libraries out money or?
No, um, what happened is, well, I think we are talking about this a little bit, but I would jump into give you most of it now and then you won't have to wait until then. So the, the app was through our software vendor and not all of the libraries in SCLC use the same software vendor. So the other libraries that use the same vendor as us, not all of them use the app. Yeah. But those of us who do, um, we're still trying to figure out, and it's gonna be different for every library. Some libraries are were already looking at other apps, and so they were able to quickly switch to one of these other apps because they already had started the process of, of doing that. Some of the libraries, uh, I guess most of the libraries that I'm familiar with are waiting because the company that we use for our software was actually developing their own app. And that should be ready by March. So since we would not be able to find another product faster than that, we're going to wait for that one to be ready, and it should integrate better with the software anyway because it was built to do that. Um, in the meantime, they are not charging, they're giving us credit for the amount of time since this situation started. And so we are not going to be out any money, but we're pretty miffed that we're out an app because we, we thought it was great. It was, you know, people could walk up and their library card was right there and they were using it for everything. We sold it hard. It was a great product and now it's gone and it's pretty distressing to us.
Was it a contractual? I mean, did they?
We don't know all of the particulars, but I do know that it was two different companies. So you know, there was a yeah, I'm sure that the lawyers are talking about it as we speak, yeah.
Right. Thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
So SCLC provide any direct funding to any of the libraries within the cooperative?
Not direct funding, yeah.
And does their money come, the state, the money they get from the state, is that federal money? Is that a combination of federal money and state money?
The statement.
And are all libraries in L A County members of the cooperative? So say Glendale, I'm just picking that out of the air. Is that? Are there libraries that simply go on their own?
Uh, there aren't many libraries that don't, yeah.
Okay.
Or they belong to some other organization that does a similar thing for them.
Hmm. But did all those other organizations get this, the state funding?
No.
So it isn't, this, it's a finite amount of money and then, oh, okay.
Are there dues that are, I may not even address, are there dues that are paid by each library?
Yes. I don't remember.
Are you aware of the pro-con decision-making process that other libraries that aren't part of SCLC have looked to?
Most of the ones that have pulled out are large enough that they don't see the benefit of belonging to SCLC.
They can do these things on their own.
Exactly. That's why it's kind of a miracle that L A PL has stayed with it. Um, the smaller libraries, there may be some that despite the fact that it's not, uh, you get more benefit for what you're paying. They still don't feel like they can afford to pay to do it, but I mean, I, I will say several years ago, I know, I think it was three thousand dollars a year that we had to pay, but it's been years since I've known exactly what our taxes were.
The, the services we receive, aside from a, what, uh, uh, an app that's pulled from us.
Well, the app was our software company.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the, um, the benefit that we got from SCLC was the other libraries that belonged to the system that use the same app that we do. We were able to figure out how to handle the situation better.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that, uh, that, that information that we have. Um, I, I believe if we look at the budget, um, go back and look at a budget that we've been previously provided, you'd probably see the amount that we pay for the SCLC on it. You feel great. Well, uh, thank you, Barbara. Now we're gonna move on to item three, which is reordering additions or additions to the agenda. Does anyone have any reordering of additions or additions to the agenda? Great. Hearing none, we will continue with the next item. Item four, approval of minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-three, Library Board of Trustees Meeting. It's recommended that the board review and consider approval of the November nine, uh, meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to, uh, to look those over?
I didn't see them. You, you know, it sounds.
No. Uh, they weren't, yeah.
During the fact.
Yeah.
First five.
Yeah.
What would be first five? Does anyone have any, uh, public comment for this item?
No.
Did anyone have any question?
This was the meeting you weren't, yeah, it was just, um, uh, uh, Kenneth, uh, Ed and I were here, yeah.
I was, I was unfortunately.
Yeah. Right.
Out of town and wasn't able to zoom in.
So I knew that, uh, uh, meetings from the November ninth meeting would be approved.
Respect me.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Staff clerk.
Okay. Dean Sarwin.
Uh, am I supposed to abstain since that wasn't at the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Bianca Richards.
Yes, approved.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
And Kenneth, you were the one to second, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Edward Pearson.
Yes.
And, uh, Annie Chang Long.
Testing.
Thank you.
Okay.
The, uh, motion passes. Thank you.
Wonderful. We'll move along now. Uh, we have the, uh, approval of the twenty twenty-four meeting date, uh, there in the packet under item, uh, number five. Uh, unsurprisingly, they are the second, third day of each month. Uh, coincidentally, January eleventh, February eighth, March fourteenth, April eleventh, May ninth, June thirteenth, July eleventh, August eighth, September twelve, October tenth, November fourteen, and December twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Wow.
Do we have any public comment for this item? I know it's a very controversial one. Okay, uh, can I get a motion? I'll make it since I won't be here. Uh, or maybe I will, we'll find out. Uh, I, I'll make a motion. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sean, please take the roll.
Hey, Dean Sarwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Edward Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Wonderful. Uh, now we're gonna look at item six, which is, uh, hand in hand, we have the approval for the intended, uh, closure dates uh, in addition to city holidays. So city holidays will be closed, but we, we have, uh, certain dates, uh, that we have set out. The recommendation is that we look at these. They are Sunday, March thirty-first for Easter. Thursday, October thirty-first, we'll close early at six P M. for Halloween. Wednesday, November twenty-seventh, we will close early at five P M. for Thanksgiving Eve. Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, we'll close at five P M. for Christmas Eve. Um, this is because we have a seven-day, which is wonderful. We do have a seven-day operating schedule, so it's a necessity to close for certain uh, things that are not holidays or recognized by the city. Um, in the past, staff has brought these proposed closures to the trustees for review and approval at different times throughout the year. And I think this is a wide decision to just do them upfront. Obviously, that some things may, uh, arise during the course of the year, but this way we, we get it out of the way. Uh, library staff are asking trustees to review these and to, uh, so that they can gain efficiency. Now, just for uh, completeness sake, the city grants the following days off to employees, which are January first for New Year's Day, the third Monday in January for M L K Birthday observed. Uh, the third Monday in February for President's Day observed, last Monday in May for Memorial Day, June nineteen for June nineteenth, excuse me, Juneteenth. Uh, July fourth for Independence Day, first Monday in September for Labor Day observed. November eleventh for Veterans Day observed. Uh, the fourth Thursday in November for Thanksgiving Day. The Friday after Thanksgiving, uh, as a substitute for Admissions Day. I'm not exactly sure what that means, but works for me. December twenty-fifth for Christmas Day. Uh, and, uh, then there will be also a, uh, winter holiday closure, which is December twenty-sixth, Thursday, paid leave day one. December thirtieth to Monday, paid leave day two. Uh, December thirty-first is a Friday, paid leave day three. Uh, this winter holiday closure gives employees three specified days to pay leave between Christmas and New Year's. Uh, for city departments that are on a four-day week, uh, per week, Monday through Thursday schedule, these uh, three days mean that those employees do not work at all between Christmas Day and New Year's Day because the library is open to the public seven days a week and library staff work a five-day-per-week schedule. The library is necessarily open and staff are scheduled to work between Christmas Day and New Year's Day. Day dates, uh, really dates that the library is open vary each year based on calendar and when the city granted holidays and winter closure, paid leave falls. If the trustees approve the proposed closures, the, uh, library closure schedule will look as follows. You can check that out for yourselves.
Yeah, I moved that the, uh, uh, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
The calendar is off on, um, years, Sean. It should be twenty twenty-four.
Oh, there is.
Uh, yes, thank you.
But the days are all right in the calendar.
Hmm.
Yes, the, the days are correct, but thank you.
Okay, so, uh, no, not, not all. We appreciate that. Uh, do we have any other comments, public comments or comment from our board?
Just confusion, our comment. So we're, we're looking at all the days or just the first four?
No, we're, this is the entirety, Bobby.
Yeah.
Do we have any other comment or can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, again, I'll move to approve of the twenty twenty-four library closures with the corrections, uh, as noted.
I think that's just to this, uh, agenda.
Piece of paper.
The days were.
Yeah. But the year was incorrect.
For all, I'll second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Sean, roll us.
Dean Sarwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Edward Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Wonderful. We're gonna move along then to the date for the volunteer recognition event. Uh, each year, it's a tradition that, uh, the Library Board of Trustees plan and host an event in the spring to recognize library volunteers for their service. In recent years, the format for the event has been a mid-morning tea, which I think has been working very well. Uh, so staff have reviewed the schedule of the library, the city and community events in March, April and May, which is, I'm sure, no small undertaking. Uh, and are recommending one of the following dates be selected. I did Tuesday, April. Uh, and are recommending one of the following dates be selected, either Tuesday, April ninth, Wednesday, April tenth, or Wednesday, May eighth. A second less desirable option is Tuesday, April twenty-third. I see no reason to consider that unless anyone else does.
When, when is school break? Would school breaks have or would that interfere with any?
It's the first week of April.
So that would not interfere. Does anyone have any thoughts on this?
I, I would tend more to go in the April as opposed to the May.
I'd agree.
I would, I would go.
Was it April nine, was that one of the days?
Yeah, April nine, Tuesday, April nine. Um, Tuesdays are generally a good day. Does anyone feel any reason that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, April ninth wouldn't work? Now, again, Barbara, maybe you can clarify, these have been pre-cleared, so there's no conflicts, we're not going to be up against anybody else. If we get on the calendar, then nobody will be booking anything to get.
Oh, yeah. April ninth is a really important day.
For birthday?
Oh.
Well, I think we should do it then and.
Well, and, and I. Times of fifth. And I, and I remember.
But then, would you prefer to not have it on your birthday? It wouldn't matter.
And last year, last year, the city staff all came and stayed.
So it was a lovely event.
I was impressed that the city staff all came and they really stayed.
Know how to throw a party.
Yeah.
I, I believe we have some public comment.
Public comment, I don't know that, um.
You're out of order on public comment, we already asked for it, but, uh, I, I'm going to make this one exception.
I'm not the public, I'm an invite again, I'm just kidding. Well, I don't know. It's called Ed Alfred, is that how you say it?
Oh.
And I know that I planned a meeting on that, um, day, and I got a lot of feedback.
Double check, yeah, took, pass over, just to check this as well.
Yeah, it's like, it says, it begins at sundown. Okay, see, that's, she says it begins at sundown, so we can be okay.
What day?
It says, it's the night.
It's the night.
It is the night. Um, we should, well, let's see, this is going to be an issue because it's going to go sundown to sundown, uh, if it's like most.
So it would start the night.
So it started the night, so we would, we could do the night, but we could not do the ten.
Right.
Now, the question would be whether that's going to, if people are going to be misunderstanding. Uh, I can speak to myself as a, a person who is Jewish, that people always think that Jewish holidays are the day, not the evening. So the calendars almost always get it wrong, so.
Right.
If we were to select Tuesday, April ninth, we, we should be prepared, uh, with a very specific explanation that. That holiday begins at, in the evening on that day, so we're not.
And mine was an evening meeting to be, oh, you know, in fairness, but when I saw that, I just thought I would.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. Um, does anyone feel that, that we can't weather that, um, that, that certification? Okay, uh, well, then if that's the case, um, uh, Sean, you're taking notes, right?
Yes.
Uh, could, could we make sure that the minutes do reflect that we were aware of this? Uh, and looked at it and decided that because the holiday itself begins, uh, at sundown on the ninth, that we would not be conflicting with it, and we were not just. Uh, uh, blase about overlapping the holiday.
That will be reflected.
It's perfect.
Yeah. It's perfect. So, so it, let me just, so we are, it, it sounds like we're all, it, it will be then, we're going to vote on for Tuesday, April ninth.
Do we need a motion for it?
Um. Yes, we would need a motion for that. Uh, does anyone feel that, that we should consider the eighth instead? Okay, hearing no, uh, further comment, uh, can I get a motion?
Yeah, move to, uh, set April ninth as the date for the voluntary recognition event.
I'll give a second. Annie is seconded with a motion made and seconded. Uh, Sean, can we please have a roll call?
Sure. Dean Serwin?
Yes.
Bianca Richards?
Yes.
Kenneth Gross?
Yes.
Annie Chang Long?
Yes.
Edward Pearson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move along to item four. Uh, we have a, um. Library policy review project status update, just as everyone may recall, uh. Gosh, a year and a half ago, I think it was, we decided we wanted to look over the, um. Uh, various policies. Per the City of South Pasadena Municipal Code, one of the powers and duties of the Library Board of Trustees is to prepare rules and regulations as may be necessary for the administration of the city library. Over the past several years, trustees' work plans have included the goal of comprehensively reviewing and updating the library's administrative policies since twenty twenty. Slow but steady progress has been made. In reviewing policies which on average have not been reviewed or updated in more than fifteen years, some of them much older, and I believe we've already knocked a few of those very old ones out. Since twenty twenty, following policies have been reviewed and updated or rescinded as necessary by the trustees. Giveaway publications, collection, selection, that's fun to say, and maintenance policy, local history selection policy, Ray Bradbury conference room policy, city council recordings policy. Community service volunteer policy, internship policy, policy on monitoring of examinations, policy for reproduction of historic photographs. Policy on harassing and stalking behavior, collection maintenance policy, which I think was, I guess that's. Distinct from the other, uh, graphic novel selection policy and the video material policy. Reviewing policies requires staff expertise and a significant amount of time. At the regular meeting of the trustees in February twenty twenty-three, staff presented a policy review schedule that has proved to be very, or overly optimistic. Uh, which is the case, we're now, uh, much further along. Um. The library's, uh, senior staff intend to revisit the policy review schedule and the priorities previously established. And return to the trustees in January with a more and new realistic review schedule for discussion. I will note that it was one of our, um. Our main goals, our three goals as a, uh, a board was to take this project on and to continue to move it forward. Um, we don't have any motion or, uh, anything related to that, and I don't believe it's really something that's. Well, if we have any public comment on it, uh, now would be the time to be heard. Uh, and then, so that's just something that we'll wait for the staff to, to give us a more optimistic update. Uh, we're going to move along to library operations update. Kathy is unfortunately not with us tonight, but we do have Barbara to, uh, provide her report.
All right, so. Exciting things happening with the library, um, and library staffing. Uh, as we were discussing a little bit earlier, uh, our new children's librarian started last Monday, their name is Bree Taylor. They're a fairly new librarian, uh, but they really got into this for the right reasons. They have a definite, um, calling. To, to connect children with literature and resources. And they're just a joy to work with. It's, it's really wonderful to see, um, the next generation coming up so that later on. And, uh, we have a recruitment for part-time aides that was recently posted. Um, we also have a recruitment for part-time children's librarian, uh, because we usually have two part-timers in addition to the full-time librarian in that division, and we're down one. And then, uh, adult and local history librarian Olivia Radbill is on leave, uh, through mid-March. Uh, and we're eagerly awaiting the next Radbill to join. So. The library app update is, um, as I mentioned earlier, that our software vendor and this, uh, app developer. Were working together to provide this app to our library, we love the app. They had a falling out, the children were split in the divorce, and we do not know what is going to happen with that original app, but it seems to be dead in the water. However, Cersei Dynex, our software vendor, had been working on developing her own app, and so they've ramped up the, the work on that, and they have told us that we will have it by March. Um, as I said earlier, they're not charging for any of the app pieces, uh, during that time, as they should not. And, um, the city got a new funding system, yes, uh, last month. We're learning how to use it, it's fairly simple, but there are certain things that we're still trying to figure out. So it is nice because now when people call, we have a caller ID, so we can see who's calling in.
Yeah.
Um, the sick call lines, nobody has to go collect those, they actually are sent through email to a central dissemination point, so all the full-time staff know who's called out, it's just, it's really. Makes it much easier for us to conduct business. And then, uh. Oh. Friday evening, last Friday, uh, library staff had our holiday, uh. Gathering. Sort of a potluck and white elephant gift exchange and, um, good time was had by all. I think that's all she, yes.
And a lovely photo.
Is a lovely photo.
Yeah, that is a nice.
Those of us who were able to attend, as usual, with this time of year, not only do people like to gather, but some people are out sick, and so it's not as many people as we would like to have, but it is still, still quite festive.
Okay, well, thank you for that report. Um. I have some thoughts of a lawyer who deals with these sort of things about the app. Um, and whether they should be doing much more than really crediting us for, for a time that they don't have, because they make, I'm guessing, warranties and representations about it and about the. That the software would not be interrupted, so, um, that's a different issue. Uh, I believe we're on to, uh, communications, um, Board's President Communication. Um. My term's up. Um, I don't know if, uh, I'll be reappointed or not, I have submitted an application, uh, if anyone wants to, uh, weigh in on that, uh, to. The powers that be, um, I, I would, uh, hopefully positively, um, uh, I, I'd be willing, yeah, yeah, I'd be willing to accept that, um. Uh, in the odd chance, well, I, I'll, if I do come back, I won't be president, I think I'm turned out from that, uh, maybe for a while. Uh, it's been an honor, uh, and a privilege and a joy, uh, to, to be the president for the last couple of years. Um, I hope that I haven't been too tyrannical, uh, in my, although I did actually learn what that word means, and it's not necessarily bad about tyrant, um, but, uh. It, it, it's been, it's been wonderful, and I want to thank, uh, each of you, um, uh, in case I don't come back, uh, next year on the board. Um, uh, ditto. So, um, thank you so much. Uh, I want to thank staff, I'm sorry Kathy wasn't here, I didn't see her very briefly yesterday. Um, but, uh, yeah, uh, with that, our seed to, why don't we send it over to, uh, Bianca, as Vice President for Board Member Communication?
Well, uh, Dean, I really do hope you'll, they return, I hope the mayor. When, when does the mayor, uh, do, is it December or January?
So, uh, we are electing a new mayor on this point here.
Right.
There's going to be some little reception that they may be interested in attending. Um, and then I think they probably, they try to get on that pretty quickly. But the holidays, I would say January, early January.
Who's the new mayor going to be?
Evelyn, Evelyn, that's a good question.
Oh.
But, yeah, I mean, the council has to vote, but it would typically be, the mayor of town will be elected, but I can't, I can't let it speak for us.
I believe that didn't happen once in the past, true?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, at least twice, yeah. And we have an item on the point.
We're not, we're not.
Yes, I was going to put, mention that in my, in my comments.
Yeah. So it's been, it's, yeah, I do hope you, you do come back, you know, yeah, it's been, I think it's, uh, been a, it's been a good board, we've gotten a lot. Lot done, lots done, and I think we're all thinking the same future forward, which is really cool, and we all get along, so, yeah.
Thank you.
And then my only comment, I'll steal some of the thunder of the friends, uh, the, I hope you all went to the, the, uh. Holiday sale, it was wonderful, I, I helped to set it up, it's, the friends are so organized, so it was easy to set up and to take down. And they made a lot of money, and it looks, you know, and the community really comes out, and I think it was great that. Um, and it's just, so, it's so nice that the city organizations are starting to, um, uh. Uh, what do you call it? Do things together, like, uh, you know, the, the friends with the South Pasadena Beautiful with the crafts, so it, it's, it would be nice to see more. Of the city, different organizations, kind of joining forces and having a cooperative kind of event, so it was, it was wonderful, and that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Bianca. Um, if I could just re-interject, I did want to also, I thank the friends, I, I was able to attend the luncheon, uh, that you had, which was very nice. And, uh, very nice spread, uh, and well-attended, um, uh, and, and well-signed once I found my way in.
Oh, my gosh, I know, sorry.
I wasn't quite sure which door to go in, but, uh.
It's hard, and it's because it's on a preschool site, it's completely locked down.
Yeah, yeah, it was very, very interesting.
Yeah.
Um, my son wa- uh, is home from college and walked in with a giant stack of ten books that he bought, uh, at the, uh, friend's bookstore. So he takes very good advantage of that, so thank you for running that. Uh. Annie, since you were last, I'm going to get, let you go next.
Um, just to say thank you to Dean for all your work as president, and hopefully we have good news next year. We're sure, but, um, offer so much and doing so much, thank you. I'm sorry, I came to my work holiday party, but. Um, just, I feel like we just lost so much professionalism and being prepared for the meetings and conducting as and making space for everyone, so just.
Annie?
Yeah, I mean, I just want, yes, along the lines of what Annie was saying, just wanted to thank you for your service, uh, to the board and for meeting us as well. It's, it's been meetings very pleasant and easy to come to and almost look forward to.
And your humor, I forgot to, I meant to say that, always when you humor, I'm getting that.
Please explain that to my children, something. Ed, um, well, I will echo what you said about, uh, the, uh, friend's luncheon, I was very glad to attend, and. Uh, it was really terrific to meet some of the, the friends' people that, uh, I hadn't had a chance to. Thank you. Uh, well, so we now are moving on to the board, uh, the council, city council liaison communications. Uh, city council liaison, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I just have two items. First of all, um, I have been told by Arminay that they have a contractor and that, that the furniture outside should be installed next month.
Wow.
Fantastic.
So, um, so that is, that would be great.
Yeah.
Um, but it's on the radar. And second, as Sally just mentioned, on the agenda for the city council this coming December twentieth meeting, and I haven't even. Been sleeping yet, um, is the ad hoc, um, is the appointment of an ad hoc committee to, including community members, I think. Or it's, I think that council is supposed to consider what that committee looks like.
Yeah.
Um, and establish a committee to sort of look at the master planning for that new library. So, if anybody has any input on that, I'm sure there will be public comment would be, um, appreciated, but you could also. Can you make recommendations or is the council seeking? I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen this yet, I actually haven't.
I can, yeah, it, uh, yeah, tells how many from each.
Oh, did she put that?
Yeah, like, one from the friends, one from this, one from.
City Council.
This is a suggestive, yeah, yeah. I don't want that, yeah.
Anybody have any thoughts on this? Well, is there, uh, R Q already? That's a very good question, I don't know. Um. Yeah, I, I do think, I mean, personally, I think at-large community members are important.
Yeah.
I, I mean, in addition to people who have been around the library, like you guys and the friends and, you know, council, but I think then just getting people from the community. I think is very critical, because you get perspectives of, you know, users of the facility. Um, so I don't know if anybody has any thoughts, but I'm happy to hear.
I, I agree completely with you in terms of the ad hoc and the, the members of the committee, you know, we do have, as I'm very fond of saying, this is, and I did look it up finally. Uh, this is pretty close to the geographic center of our community, but it is certainly the figurative center of our community. And, um, uh, it, because our community does spread out considerably from it, I think that it's vital that we have, uh, uh, members of that community. That come from different areas, both demographic, uh, and geographic, uh, as well as chronological. Uh, you know, we should have young and older people on that, so that we get a broad spectrum of, of input.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Generational, absolutely.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing across you, parents, you know, others, um, just to get a good draw. I don't know how you work with your neighbors here.
I don't know how you work with your neighbors here, if, you know, that's an early thought.
Well, we just asked Bianca how they work with the neighbors.
That's a good point.
Or if they did.
At some point, they're gonna lay in, maybe they're a little bit older. Um, we don't include it.
Yeah, it's cause it's a mixed neighborhood, and we've got some neighbors that are very supportive and use the library, and other neighbors who are not real supportive of the library, so it's, yeah, but they did buy a house next to the library.
We call that coming to the nuisance in law.
Yeah.
Coming to the, coming to the nuisance, you can't complain that the library's there when you, it was there when you moved in.
Oh.
I think the thing is, Kate, the slaughterhouse, it was there.
Uh, there's slaughterhouses in, uh, uh, Quarters, that is what it was, yeah.
Maybe like an open process where folks can actually submit their, um, applications to be part of it, or something just where there, it feels like it is equitable chance to be part of.
Yeah, I think we'll probably set the, I don't know what the report says, it probably just kind of give a little outline, but I think that we definitely have to be an open process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent, well, thank you, um.
But let's look forward to the furniture in January, hopefully, in this process.
It's been a pleasure to have you, and thank you.
Well, I have so enjoy, I don't know if I'll be the liaison next year, but, um.
Hopefully we'll have that consistency.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, but I will say, it's, it's really, I love coming to these meetings, I love your all dedication, and, and, I mean, the library's just such a jewel in this community, so.
And I love your scarf.
Oh, thank you, thank you, so, anyway, so thank you.
So, moving on to friends of the library communications.
Okay, kinda have a lot like I always do, but, um, so our nominating committee met and they presented the, uh, slate, the proposed slate at our holiday luncheon, and I'm really excited to report that there is basically going to be a change of the guards. Um, because some of our newest directors have, um, stepped up and are taking big roles as president, um, executive vice presidents, all the positions are being filled, they're actually creating another one. And there will be four to five that are under the age of thirty-five. So it's really exciting, um, so like you, I am gone. Uh, I can, I'll stay on as, uh, the, uh, past president and maybe operations, but I'm we're thinking of handing that off to somebody also, but that hasn't been created, they didn't create that position yet, they weren't thinking it would be a co, but I am not in favor of co-positions, not because it's just hard, you have to have one person, so it's not that I don't want somebody to do it, uh, to work with, but that's, so I'm really excited about that. And then our bylaws were also presented at our annual meeting, I mean, at our holiday luncheon, and they will be voted on at the annual meeting. We did a really deep dive into our policies to make them more aligned, um, they were presented to the board. We wanted a little more time to be able to go over them for some of the people, um. So we're gonna go over them and those will be voted at, not at the annual meeting, but at our, our board meeting in January. Um, the proposed budget was adopted, and that will again be voted on at the annual meeting. And as you mentioned, our holiday luncheon was on the seventh, so I wanted to thank you for attending, and it was, we had about twenty-one people there, so that was great. Um, and, um, Rose Baron, our friend's bookkeeper for the past eleven years, is retiring. So we are in the process right now of finding her replacement, so that's going to be a big change, um, for us, uh, she's been that consistent person for the, um, for the friends, as you know, as we change every two years, it's, sometimes it's hard to find the financial people, but we, um, what's really exciting is we have a finance committee that is meeting every month, and so we're going over the procedures, trying to streamline things, so that, that's a good, uh, good policy, I know that you would love to hear that, because the friends finances, you know, there's all these little pockets. Uh, membership, you know, I hate to report, at the end of this year, was really much lower, but that is very consistent too with all organizations, um, it's just, there, it's down, so we ended the year, well, we haven't ended yet. Um, as of today, there were, um, two hundred and twenty-seven members for a total of about twenty-three thousand, hundred and sixty-three dollars. Um, so that, last year we had two sixty-five, but sometimes we get towards the end, you know, people wanna get that in, so I think that number will go up. And I always tell people, please renew, if you hadn't, we had a new policy with the bookstore this year, the annual book sale, is that you had to be a member to get in early, and so, um, those book dealer, it may, it, we were a little worried because it was a little slow at the beginning, but the book dealers didn't get to come in and grab all the great books, so they came in that hour after, so, uh, I think that worked out, I haven't really talked to them, but as you mentioned, that holiday book sale over those three days, uh, so, uh, raised seven hu, seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Think that may be a record, I'm not sure, um, but, and this total I'm gonna give you does not include that, but as of through November, uh, the bookstore has raised forty thousand, six hundred and two dollars and ninety-three cents on twenty-five and fifty cent mostly books. Um, so that, that is amazing, amazing, um, our restoration concerts are doing really well, and so the next one is, uh, the twenty-eighth. And so they're not doing the series tickets anymore, so if you wanna, if you don't have the series, I mean, because there's not enough to sell, but you can still attend for twenty-five dollars. You can buy that right now, um, at the door, hopefully we'll get to put them online. And again, our, really, our communication's going very strong, there was a lot of publicity, uh, for the holiday book sale, and so just follow the friends on Instagram, and, and so, um, I think I get to come to one more meeting, for sure. Uh, yeah, that's in January, because we, we don't take office, uh, our, our, your people will take office till February one.
Well, it's been a pleasure to have you here. And I, I just put a note in my phone to remind myself to double check, because I, I forget if I, uh, renewed my membership or not.
Well, I think you are a member this year, so if you may, renew it after January one, but check for sure.
Double check.
So thank you very much.
We're, well worth doing, and again, thank you for, for running that bookstore, just every time my boy comes home, he goes there and comes back with a pile of books.
We have two amazing co-chairs that are, and they're, and their committee.
Uh, moving back to the library director communication, uh, Barbara, do you have anything else to add?
No, uh, the only other thing Kathy had given me was that, just before, um, she left, we discovered that the agenda had been posted with the ad hoc. So, it's been covered.
Yeah, that, that went out, I should've gone on to all the committee chairs, uh, uh, or committee, uh, members should've received that, I, I received it secondarily well. Um, uh, public comment continued.
Actually, Dean, uh, do we wanna go back to the trustee liaison to the friends?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I did miss that, um, I jumped right over you, Bianca.
No, no, and I don't have any, I wasn't able to attend the, the luncheon, so, um, and I already made my comments.
You all ate your cookies, don't worry.
Those were good cookies.
Yeah.
I made beautiful cookies.
Yeah, I, no, no, no further comments from me.
Thank you, Sean.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, with that, with no further items or comments, staff and or board members, I will now adjourn the meeting at, no, I think we set a record, seven fifty-eight P M. Our next meeting, uh, hopefully our next meeting will be on January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M, back here in the lovely, uh, library library room.